A joint public hearing between the planning board and the Board of Selectmen, that the planning board is considering an application for modification to the previously approved site plans submitted by Eric Sorensen, President of Newbury Golf Center Inc., for the Newbury Golf Center 131, 133, and 151 Scotland Road, Assessors Map R43, Lots 2, 11, and 4B. This requires the planning board a simple majority of three out of five votes. The original site plan approval granted was on November 15th, 2017. Thank you.
All right, I'd like to motion open the floor.
Second.
And we are going to be continuing our public hearing, so into consideration of the submitted by Eric Sorensen, President of Newbury Golf Center Inc., for modification of the special permit for the Newbury Golf Center 131, 133, and 151 Scotland Road, Assessors Map R43, Lot 2, 11, and 4B. Required supermajority, four out of five votes of the Selectmen. The original permit submitted on November 15th, 2017. Thank you.
What I'd like to do is set out the parameters.
I'm counting seven, and one on the phone is eight.
Oh, you're counting one, two, three.
Yeah.
So that's three planning board members, and the remaining, and one is on the phone is four. And one, two, three, four.
Did we lose a planning board member? Didn't we have five?
There are five, one is.
There are five, one is away.
Okay, and they can watch the...
They don't...
Yes.
This, yes, they can.
Yes, they can.
Okay, but they can mullens rule any bit to the extent that there's something being voted on.
Right.
Where it's going to be voted on at the next hearing where they missed this hearing.
Right.
Okay.
But our site plan is only three members as opposed to a supermajority.
Okay, thank you.
All right?
Yeah.
So what I'd like to do is set up the parameters of what we want to accomplish tonight. And what I'm going to do is read through the conditions as much as I can of what we talked about last time that were due to be completed by today. And then I'm going to ask Eric for a status report about where we are, and then updated schedule, and then after that, any new materials, and then we'll talk about the sidewalk. Is that okay with everybody? This might take a little bit of time. These are the conditions that we, the Selectmen and the planning board did together. So I'm going to read one, and just, Damon will read the next one. Condition number five, the applicant shall submit a full and complete landscape plan addressing the entire site except for the areas proximate to the carboons 121 and 123 Scotland Road, Laura Hadlin and Frances Heaney, 167 Scotland Road, and Jean Cunningham, 143 Scotland Road, the abutters mitigation plan so-called, no later than August 23rd, 2018, by the close of business 4:00 p.m. That is, three business days before the next session of the continuous public hearing scheduled for tonight.
Condition six, the applicant shall, no later than August 23rd, 2018, submit a full and complete operations and maintenance plan detailing with specificity how the applicant will maintain the landscaping, planting, and features proposed in the landscaping plan to achieve appropriate stabilization and survivability for no less than two years.
Condition number seven, the applicant shall simultaneously submit a full and complete site plan in accordance with all requirements of the zoning bylaw. Prior to submission of the site plan, the applicant shall obtain review, comment, and approval of the reconfigured driveway by the fire department.
Condition eight, the applicant shall, no later than August 23rd, 2018, submit a full and complete schedule of work detailing with specificity the time and sequence of all landscaping, planting, related features such as rain engine, irrigation, and gratings as required above.
Condition number nine, the schedule of work shall commit to be complete of all landscaping and grading as required above by no later than October 1st, 2018.
Condition 13, the applicant shall arrange for a fund and schedule no less than three onsite meetings, inspections per week with the town consulting engineer from today forward and while the provisional approved work is undertaken.
And then condition 14, the applicant shall engage a licensed site professional as project manager who shall, at a minimum, be charged with overseeing and monitoring all of the above activities, and who shall communicate and meet with the town's consulting engineer.
Condition 16, the applicant shall provide suitable and appropriate dust control measures and erosion and sediment control as conditions dictate, at all times until the site is landscaped and stabilized. Such measures shall be consistent with accepted industry practices, local state regulations, and with the recommendations made by the county authorities.
And so, Eric, if you could go over your status report on all of these items first, and then give us the schedule, that would be appreciated.
Well, you have the landscape plan.
So... Do you want us to just report on the status of them, or do you want us to take each one one at a time and actually get into any discussion on them?
I think it'd be just as well to go through each one. Condition one was the landscape plan.
So, you know, we have our real landscape plan here. It's just the mitigation of trees. So, same as everything, same as always, we're going to proceed and install those. We have numbers. We're getting good, I mean, good prices right now from the...
Excuse me.
Who is that?
You know, but Eric, you need to stand up and...
Yeah.
We're not clear who you are, so you can just stand up and identify yourself.
Rick Wade, Meridian, Neil McCarthy, and Michael Rode. So Neil is doing the landscaping, and the plan has been involved since the beginning with LEC, and putting this together.
So I'll take it from here, I'll give it for a second. I was on vacation last week, so I don't know the status of whether or not a plan is submitted to Martin or not last week. And I handed Martin 12 copies of this plan. This plan is the combination plan that both towards one, the original landscape design, and the mitigation plan. In addition to that, these red trees here are additional trees beyond that that have been talked about for screening on the carbone site. This plan does not go further than that at this point to deal with the other issues along the carbone property that hopefully we'll talk about tonight. As soon as those are discussed, I talk to Neil, he'll come up to my office, we'll get a plan, and once we get that agreed, so this is the plan that you did ask for, the combination.
All right.
Just to go over again, everything is in the left hand here. These plants we do have, trees we do have secure, we're not going to plant them until, I believe, the third week. Obviously, weather's going to dictate when they go in, and I don't want to put them in right now. But we will put them in in September.
But just so we can record what you've submitted on this date.
On this date.
Okay, all right, thank you.
The O and M plan is in, the original plan that we submitted to, in that LEC 86-page document that is in there.
So I know that there's been some discussion about whether that was correct or not, because what, I thought part of the, part of the O and M that had been submitted was for storm water, but not necessarily for the entire site. Am I incorrect about that?
The...
Am I right, Rick?
There are two O and M reports. One was submitted by my office for the project as a whole. The second O and M plan that you are curious about, the O and M for the landscaping, was an incredibly well-detailed O and M plan submitted by LEC and Ann Martin as part of the mitigation plan. That document is already on file.
Okay, so let's make sure, so you remember that.
Yes, I thought Rick said that they were going to be submitted just as a separate thing.
Okay. As long as we have.
So can I ask a clarifying question? Do you, does he work with Ann?
Yeah, he worked with Ann to get the project, to do this plan. He did work with her. We did the sidewalk together to identify which plants and trees were cut down, what's existing, so we moved the plants back. It represents what was there.
Okay. Then the next one, do you have a traffic? Mike?
The next one? Yeah, you had, so full landscape plan, O and M plan. Third thing was the full complete site plan with reconfiguration of the driveway.
Right. And that's that? Is that right?
That's right.
That one's a little confusing to me. Go ahead, Mike.
So I don't think we got the fire chief response by the 23rd, but we did get a fire chief response that asked either ride in or do a hardened shoulder. We are...
It came to me yesterday.
To ride in. We got a...
I talked to the chief today, and a hardened shoulder, he accepted that, and he was in agreement for that.
So we have to put that on a plan and show you that on a plan, so we can't just let her till, again, either yesterday or the day before, but we've been in communication with them. We are agreeing to do the hardened shoulder, and Rick is going to need to put that on the plan through.
Eric, is that hardened shoulder only on the curves?
I believe that's what his request was.
Yes. I was wondering...
Because the trucks can fit straight up, which is making a...
I know that, but you know, as time goes on, and you look at that, in the process of doing it with plowing and everything else, and shoulders get worn away and everything else from plowing. I don't know if it's something that, you know, friends will allow, or Master of War will allow, or somebody's control will allow, but I should think it would be good just to pay a little cost, but it's not a lot of extra pay. Mr. Sorensen, I could respond to that. Fire department has asked that this curve and this curve have a hardened shoulder for his purposes and fully get your purposes. I think there's ample room on much of this road. This is flat and through here, but as you get down and through here, I've got no space to give you anything on the right-hand side of this road.
This is where it's kind of to maintain.
Right, but there's plenty on the left side to have a shoulder for plowing on the left side, but the right side's just go right up against it.
Schedule of landscape work. And so, it's really weather, this weather dependent, obviously.
Sorry.
Yeah.
So it was item eight, schedule of work, and it included work in some landscaping, and then item nine was a commitment to complete the landscaping by October 1st.
Right.
So can I make a suggestion, is that you can have them the updated schedule they have out. You could go through the whole schedule and then let Neil discuss the ordering and the landscaping portion in the schedule.
And we're only talking about mitigation plans at this time, correct?
That's it.
So... Okay, so we can kind of just briefly go through, we're pretty much on schedule what I handed you before. Just let Eric let him start. No, no, no. So everybody was out there, obviously, this weekend. Martha came out on Tuesday morning. We are getting our grades. The hammering is obviously the great unknown. Some of that ledge is hard, you know. The one of the things I did ask the board is to have a little artistic flair with maybe some of that ledge on average. I think many of you were on board with that. The less hammering we can do, the better. So, you know, hopefully tonight we can talk about that a little bit more detail, about that. You know, we're still getting our cuts and fills and grades as he's doing that. He hopes to have it done in a couple weeks and then get into the parking lot. One of the things that we want to discuss is the delivery of buildings. We do have the buildings on schedule for the week of 17 being delivered. Do you have those grades set? There'll be Morton Building coming in and doing that with their own people, not our guys, getting pulled off, so we'll continue with this schedule. No one on the crew now would go that direction. It'll be all Morton coming in. So you can see that on the, on week seven. They start construction on the 24th. Two buildings, and obviously do the building that has the inside work first, and then get into the second building, which really has no, very minimal inside work, which is the open garage building that holds all of the tents. So, you know, obviously, I review this with the contractor every week, and he's still on schedule with everything here. Obviously, weather dictates everything. Going back to the landscape plan with Neil, with the trees, obviously, this week was hot.
Plus, we've been trying to solicit and get all the numbers together, see what quantities are available. Not all the stock is perfectly available, because a lot of these are fall hazards, so they can't dig anything till, you know, early November, early October, so we've made some substitutions. Another thing, I've been speaking with Doug, the Conservation Commission, of some of these areas, we're going to have to substitute, put these, some of the plant material on alternative sites, some of them, you'll still get sandlot ones. So, you know, this is more of a mitigation plan. Using the term landscaping, that's not really the proper term, this is mitigation, so we're not, you're going to be, Mother Nature will take care of most of this, we will water, we have water on site, but there won't be irrigation in these locations. It'd be kind of irresponsible to waste the water on these.
So their question is, number nine, that portion of the, of the mitigation as opposed to landscaping, will, is on schedule to be completed for October 1st?
It's not a problem.
Okay.
So just, you know, let's understand how much ledge is out here. So we've ordered some plants, and I am shining, some of the large species, I've walked this site so many times, and I've done some of the planting. I think we're going to have much better success with some smaller plants and having, if we need to, particularly in the swamp areas, these things will just, they'll crank as soon as they get them in. It's going to be really nice. The replication will be excellent. We will get these in easily before our builders come through. Any questions?
I have one. So you're saying you're looking at substitutions, is that substitutions of species that you...
One particular species is carryable butter, which is a hickory. No one carries hickory. It's not really a plant that's grown very pop, it's not a popular plant that's grown frequently. So what we've done is substituted red maple and some additional folks in the...
Where did the hickory come from in the first place?
It grew naturally.
It was there.
Yeah. It was, and there was only about three hickory trees or four out. There weren't a ton of them, and there's still plenty out there, but the gentleman that did the cutting, unfortunately, the small was in the way, he cut them, so. I've solicited two plants that grew indigenous plant species to the area, and neither one has been stuck. So that's one thing you have to understand, is, you know, there's also yellow birch, and here, that's a, it's not black birch, I'm sorry, factual elephants, it's yellow. But certain species just are not commonly grown, they are grown, they're very small, they're only used for wetland replication and mitigation plans, so you're not going to buy gigantic plants that are in those sizes. Now, red oak, white oak, maples, we can find those at decent sizes in the alley, so it's just the way, it's just how the nursery industry operates. They grow what's popular.
Thirteen is the onsite inspections, so as...
Joe's been out there, I think, twice.
Twice. Three times.
Three times?
In the case of that.
We have no, on two.
So Joe's been out there for the sun.
Okay.
Site professionals, project manager.
Phil Colsey, he's out there every day. He's...
George? No, he's still here.
Okay.
I can hear.
All right. Good. So that was 14, and then the last one, 16, was suitable erosion and dust control to acceptable industry standards.
So, you know, I can comment a couple things, obviously. The last couple days have been severe heat, and the dust has been heavy. You know, we are watering, we have water on site, we have a water truck, we're doing the best we can to try to mitigate this. I mean, I know it's bad, I'm not hiding that. I mean, we are trying our best to do this. I mean, it is 100-plus heat index out there, so it is, you know, we are using enough water to try to, it's going to rain Friday, so, you know, we are, we are addressing that fills, addressing that colsey.
So I guess, one of the things that I'm intrigued with is, I think there's some things on your schedule that you want to do, that you currently do not have the town's permission to do, and so I, Martha, I wonder if you can clarify this for us? Do you know, in other words, what we're really after is finalizing the work to mitigate the former problems that you have.
Right, so it's grading, site stabilization, and the planting.
And the planting that we just discussed. So those have to be done by October 1st, and right now, there's no permission to do anything else until that works, so.
No buildings, no parking.
So maybe you want to talk about that?
Okay, I mean, I think it goes hand in hand with, you know, doing the parking lot, you know, getting material and cuts and fills, and taking material from the site in order to get the grades. He's working the whole site rather than taking material out of that sit there. You know, if you need a material from the back to get a cut and a fill in front, he's using that, and that's how, you know, these contractors work. The less they can handle material, the easier it is to bring them to work the site. The building's obviously, you know, that area's prepared and it's ready. You needed, they needed that cut in order to fill the grades out, out in the field, and that's what we're working towards, as you saw on your sidewalk on Saturday.
So I want to add, so we, by presenting this schedule, we are not presuming that we have permission to do all these things, which I think was your point?
No, no.
Oh, okay.
No, it was just that you want to do it.
Correct, so, so one of the things we wanted to talk to when we got into a broader discussion was, we would like to keep doing some of these other things. I mean, and I think it goes to the whole greater picture, which is, you don't want to do work on the site and then have to come back in with heavy equipment later that's going to, you know, require you, redo some of the work you've done. It also will be able to give people a better visual impact, because one of the things that we're discussing and walking down the road a little, but also representing that we're going to continue to do sidewalks, is we want to give everybody a visual impression of the site, so that we can figure out the things that we were talking about, for instance, where exactly should the fences go? How tall should the trees be that are on the different barms? And we talked about that kind of, I think the term we used was like a cone of privacy, like how do we lay out, where are those buildings going to be? How are they going to be viewable from the second floor of the carbone's home? And I'll be making sure that the peaks of the roofs are at the right level, so that the fence and the tree design will line up the correct way.
So, so these are items you'd like to do in week six, and in other words, by September 17th and 24th, basically two weeks and one week before the October 1st timeline that you see finishing the mitigation. Is that, just want to make sure I understand it?
Yeah, I mean, the schedule, this is the proposed schedule, okay.
Yeah, it's a separate company coming in to do this, so we're still keeping our eye on the progress to do this. It's just trying to get everything and wrap everything up as quick as possible, so there's less work.
Yeah, I think, I think I'd like to hear what my board thinks about that, about allowing other pieces of project to move forward before the site is stabilized and the mitigation plantings are finished.
Well, I'll also say, are planning board members the same thing? It's really a question of, is it helpful to the issues we're trying to resolve to have the parking lot and the delivery of buildings in place? Well, starts, I don't know about Morton finally, but are you suggesting they be finalized, the Morton buildings?
I mean, no, they're going to bring them to the site and start the, I mean, it takes time to...
Bring them to the site?
They bring them to the site.
But they don't put them, in other words, they're not going to put them in a place where we can judge the impact, will they?
They will start them, they're on their, they're on their schedule. I mean, Damon, you have a Morton building, they don't find your property, kind of know how they work, they bring them in, they bring in their whole crew, they build them. I mean, it's a high-end prefab building.
Right. But are they going to put them on the site where they're going to be?
Yes.
Well, they're going to erect them there. They'll come on a, you know, truck next to them, their crew will come in, they'll start to erect them.
Okay.
And it takes a couple weeks, and that, you know, kind of putting the schedule together, then, you know, you start to have the inside work, and all these other people...
Right, this is saying you're not doing the inside work until they get them up, until light be... So, I don't know, what is the word, Sam?
I don't have a problem with it. I mean, there are certain things that logically have to happen before the next step, and so I think making sure that he doesn't have to go back and redo and destroy initial work, because we want to be careful about litigation, don't make any sense. I think we need to go on a logical construction sequence that allows this to go forward.
I think that that makes a lot of sense, in some respects. I mean, obviously, an occupancy permit is pretty important at the end of this.
Yes.
So I think, you know, if you're going to do mitigation, and you need the weather to do mitigation, it makes good sense, and I think you're probably very right, that we're letting things proceed at a certain level, as long as our confidence stays high. You could do all the work in the world, if you don't do it right, you're not going to get in.
Exactly, yeah, don't give me the C R.
Exactly. The best, the best example is like the fire chief might have a pump right in the electrical, and that, the way the mortars built is, you put the building on first, you put a conduit in, then you sleep on the electrical later, and they pour the slab on the foundation later. So it's kind of all got to logically tie together as they're taking those steps along the way.
So the, however, you right now have only the right to do what we've discussed.
Exactly, correct.
So you got, the Selectmen...
So do you...
Well, Damon, go ahead.
Do you realistically see you needing this timeline?
I do, I mean, he's, he's on board, and he needs to bring in another machine to speed it up. I mean, I think the next week or two, I'm just going, you know...
Can I, so this might be a good opportunity for like the artistic creative on the site discussion, because there are like, when Eric did the sidewalk with you, you talked about some of the heavy ledge, heavy node areas, so this is all important to timeframe. So Rick, do you want to kind of explain?
And one thing that I think for us, is we try to position in sequence, you know, it kind of starts out, not bad, but it kind of starts out, well, we're going to substitute some plants, and they might not be as big as they are, you know, so we're thinking, let up to that with whatever's going on. So you didn't put us in a good mood.
I would expect that whatever we discuss here tonight, you're going to get every wise plan that you're going to vote on. Landscaping, grading, whatever. I wasn't under any belief that we could just say, hey, we want a substitute, we need to, we need to change these things up. When we made...
And when you're having those conversations, maybe with Doug, that's how those things are, because it's certainly sharp at that, maybe some of that information should get up to us from that...
Absolutely.
...intervention is so...
Yeah, I asked Neil earlier today to come up to my office, pull over these changes so we can make the next final landscaping plan, and I didn't want to do that yet, because we still got to work out the details with the carbones on this side. Keep regurgitating papers, crazy. So Neil's coming up to my office this week, hopefully we can get through some answers tonight, and then we'll have another plan pretty quickly.
One of the, I spent an hour or two up at the site yesterday, I apologize for not being there Saturday, I was on vacation, and, you know, I had talked about, at the last meeting I was at, about out in this area, there's some ledge out there, let's leave, who cares, right? So one of the real issues on timing is right here, in front of my plan, you can see it, in the little ledge knob right there, that's a little, walked around the site up in the back there, that's about, it's hard a piece of ledge as big as I've seen, that it's this entire area, and there's a tendency to cut on that piece of ledge. We're talking a month's worth of hammering with that machine. And Eric asked me to take a look at it, and the only thing I can come up with, and I like the idea, is the grass tee, carrot, right now, this side of the grass tee has about a six-foot cut right now to get to grade. I would like to bring that grade up. Right now, this, this has got a fill on this side, it's at 76 the entire length. I'd like to make this at 76 and make this at 84, which is pretty much on grade, and then cut this grade down through this entire area, instead of having a 10-foot cut out to five-foot cut. Saving a tremendous amount of work. He's still going to get out there and hammer it, but half as much work as he's going to do. I can show it on a plan roughly, but it's easier to do it in the field. I don't think anybody's going to really care what grade this is, it's going to be not as high as it is now, and save weeks' worth of smashing that ledge down. That's the biggest area that I can see. The other ones out here, I think, you know, a little bit of artistic flair on our part will allow us to leave the ledge out there, is what I want to do, but I'm kind of getting, I want to seek your opinion on this tonight, so that I can go and present it. At least the proposed plan, it's not going to get built exactly the way, that's a substantial piece of work.
Well, the five-foot differential, what would that mean to the carbone?
So what I've done today, I went back and I looked at my drone flight that I told you guys about, that I did about a month ago, and it's a Super Junior drone, right? And the drone...
And the drone caught the Hanlon's house, and then actually caught the Carboni's house. Now they actually got a nice point cloud at both of the homes so I can get exact elevations of their homes. I want to go over these quickly but carefully with you, one at a time. Carboni house on the left side of the house with the highest roof on. The elevation on that roof is plus or minus seventy-nine. The windows that are down here, which I believe where the bedrooms are. Halfway up the windows is at elevation seventy-two. These Colorado spruces here, and these Colorado spruces here. This is where the gap is in the wall, and this is where the tree was taken down up front. Eleven or ten Colorado spruces here, and eleven Colorado spruces here. And then we proposed the fence, which we're talking about potentially.
I need you to stop for a second. Because we have a second public hearing tonight. It's scheduled to start at three minutes ago, and we're just going to have to delay that. I'm sorry, we'll have to get through this first, just to let everybody know who's here for the downfall road project. We'll get to it as soon as we can, all right? Thank you very much.
Just to back up a second, halfway up the windows, on the second floor, elevation seventy-two. These, the top of this fence that we had previously proposed is going to be around seventy-eight. If you're on the second floor, it's seventy-two. Top of that fence is about seventy-eight. The tops of these trees in here are going to be around eighty.
When planted?
When planted, when planted. There are eight to ten-foot Colorado spruces. And apparently, there was some talk about extending this fence here, and the grade's just going up even higher through here. So, one, you can't see out, back down the other side. So, most of this, they're not going to see, you're up into this.
Okay.
On the Hanlon side, her roof peak is at eighty-nine. Halfway up her windows is about eighty-two on the second floor. The peak of this, and this is again a suggested permit, I'm going to work with Neil on, is at eighty-nine. The top of that is pretty much the same elevation as the top of her house. Again, her windows, there are midway up her windows, eighty-two. Top of this berm is at eighty-nine. Again, no trees were taken down on this side. And we're talking about putting some type of evergreen, white pine or something, on top of the eighty-nine.
Okay. Well, again, what does everybody think about all this? Is that reasonable to you, Chuck?
Well, once again, I think what everyone's trying to wrestle with is the building might be going up before October first, and I think that's the question you got to ask our board and your board, John. I mean, I still feel that with the weekly, with our engineer on site and everything else, as long as they can get a better control on dust than you seem to have. And I would wait to see what the Carbonis say, but I mean, if the idea is getting this project done and not letting it last and last and continue to go and go and be a nuisance for into December, it says to be an open winter. I think that I'm okay with letting the building proceed if they reach the other benchmarks that you've talked about.
How does that piece of ledge that you're going to work on, how does that affect where the building is going to be placed? Does it have no effect?
It doesn't, I mean, it's up here.
Here, the building.
See, I haven't tried to introduce that yet.
Another good point, these trees along this fairway, since my drone picked them all up, just about all of them are seventy-eight feet in height.
Seventy-eight feet.
On here, and the trees along here, and the trees back here.
That's seventy-eight feet tall from the, from level, from whatever grade.
Seventy-eight some are higher. I took, I went down a little bit, and they're almost all at the same elevation, seventy-eight. The light holes are fifty of the fairway. So, you got, the light will be twenty-eight feet lower than the top of those trees.
So, my biggest concern is I don't see how you can meet this timeline. You got to convince me.
It's, I mean, he's got to work on it every day, it's changing. I mean, it's changed from Saturday to Wednesday. I mean, they mount trucks, they mount material, they're moving around to get this flat. I mean, it's, the site is moving, and that seed's going to go down. Each of the sods are melting in.
So, let me ask a question, because the town has a consultant out there. They've been out three times, they have permission to come out three times a week. What is it that the consultant's reporting back on? And what is it that we could do to convince you, other than be out there every day doing the work? I think from the last meeting to this meeting, from the site walk to the meeting before that, I think we've been meeting these benchmarks that we've been presenting the schedule. And I presume you're going to want us to come back again in two weeks or in four weeks and go through it again and do what we started to do tonight, which is go through seven or eight things and let you know we're meeting them. At the end of the day, the person that has the biggest risk is Eric because we know at any moment, if we're not meeting your benchmarks, he's going to get hit with another cease and desist. And as Mr. Walker earlier said, if we get the building up but we don't finish the mitigation, we're not getting a certificate of occupancy, that's it. Other than to say we changed crews, we have two or three or four times as much equipment out there right now, and we're going at it every single day, every minute of every day. And we're trying to feather in other things to coordinate and get it done. I don't know what else we could do to prove it, other than invite you to come every Saturday and take a site walk and take a look and see how we're doing.
What is it, just do engineers say, does he say they're meeting? Is it what that team is?
What he said so far, I didn't get a report from his visit today. So, there's most, they're in your packets, but he said.
These are pretty factual.
Just pretty factual, right, you're right.
So, for example, I was going to read this later, but I went by the site today, and Eric took me around on his golf cart. He stressed that they are focusing on getting the large area ready for lom seed. As we discussed, he has the well working and is washing off truck tires before they leave the site. Scotland road was pretty clean with just some dust on the pavement. Eric says he is out there and sweeps it occasionally. A second, go ahead. And then, look like Colosi, is that his name? What's his for sale? Phil Colosi. Is mobilized, no sign of previous contractor. Logs and stumps appear to be gone, and some site grading has been done. Hammer is on site and appears to be going at the ledge. Grade stakes are here and there, and they're throughout for rough grading. There is still a lot of work to do, and twelve-week schedule once again appears impractical. I would imagine the Conservation Commission in particular would be hoping for completion of site grading and lom seed by the end of September, which is what we have done as well. So that the majority of disturbed areas can be stabilized for the winter. I know that developer will usually want to concentrate on getting the buildings in, but site stabilization should be a priority this late in the growing season. I attached a couple of pictures from the middle, but they came out in there kind of.
Can I ask a quick question? Was that after his first visit or after the second?
This is August twenty-third.
So, that was only a few days after Colosi got gone. So, that was the first visit?
It would have been.
He actually visited two days in a row, so this one was recorded from his visit around five o'clock on the twenty-second, and then he went back the next day.
Okay.
And rode around with Eric.
So, these are Wednesday and Thursday of last week.
Lastly, okay.
Okay?
Yep.
And so, he obviously is expressing the concern that you just raised, which is, he's not sure how you get it done, but.
Do we schedule that Eric can come back in two weeks and we get progress report?
Well, I think we might have to.
Directly proportional to how many people you throw out.
Yeah? I think, I think.
So was that.
Wait in on this.
Yes, so, thank you.
Why I waved my hand earlier, is I was going to make a similar suggestion. When the board voted the conditions it did at the last meeting, it was contemplated, although not scheduled, to have a meeting on the eleventh of September.
Correct.
I just drew some lines across the schedule that you submitted. You know, one after October first, obviously, that was the sort of finish line that was contemplated in the conditions. And then another one right around the nine-eleven date. And if you look before the nine-eleven date, there's, I circled parking lot, there's two mentions of that. But then a whole lot of work comes after that, more substantial work. So, I thought the boards might want to consider asking, you know, what work would you contemplate doing, you know, or asking for permission to do before the nine-eleven date? Or can you reserve on this question? And see what progress is made? Because I think the board has expressed a certain amount of uneasiness about making a decision before we really got there. Maybe we're there on the eleventh, maybe we're not there on the eleventh. But we should certainly be better informed at that time. So, perhaps if that date actually was the real date of the meeting schedule, then that's the time.
And I think we did agree on a meeting on the eleventh. I'm looking it up in my calendar now, it's seven o'clock on the eleventh.
I think so, and I think we just need to be further convinced on the eleventh. That's what it sounds like to me.
I mean, I think, John, you think, John, I think Eric is probably maybe looking at other things. If Eric doesn't get that seeded and get the grass started this year, it's going to be a mess all winter. And so far, beyond the April, you want to have anything done next year. So, I have a feeling that if you have any grain going, it's going to be a can of this. Who then is doing the work? Because he's got to get that seeded, because you won't get it seeded in the spring, you won't get it stabilized in the wet season. You'll come out of that right in the hot weather next year, and you won't be going.
Eric, we've got to be seeded. So, I mean, with the buildings, I got to get everything lined up for the buildings. Cement, get everything lined up. You know, as you saw, the stakes were out there, the grades were there. We're going to get a little bit of work if we get the quarters and add grades.
So, getting back to that piece of ledge that you're talking about, how much time do you think you need to throw at that to get that to the point where you can do work on it?
At the five-foot cut or a ten-foot cut?
I mean, five-foot or ten-foot cut? I mean, if you're going to get that down with grade.
Whatever your plan is.
If you're going to get that down with grade, that's going to be the one of the last things to do.
Okay, so that's the thing, yeah.
I mean, Bentley Warren's hammering, so again, that's a separate subcontractor to Colosi. So, it's none of Colosi's guys working on the hammer. It's all Bentley Warren doing that, so. They're going to go over there, but you know, we have a priority list of where he's working. He's working on ledge right here, you know, a little bit of area right here, and then he's going to finish off where he needs to be. That would be the last piece of ledge.
So, you have a couple of different subcontractors working with you right now? You have one subcontractor that's tackling the ledge issue?
Yep, that and Warren.
You have another subcontractor that's tackling the grading?
Well, that's the whole site contract, which is Phil Colosi and his staff, yes. And then you have.
Site work, to stabilize the site, so you can get the grass, get the grade to grading, get those grass down. Who else do you have working on the site right now?
Well, right now, those are the only two right now. I mean, Morton Building will obviously come in with their staff, some will, cement will be a subcontractor.
That's not until.
Right, later down the road. I mean, it's Colosi and his staff, and Bentley Warren doing the main stuff. I mean, he has subcontractors coming in.
What's this gentleman doing?
Well, he's.
He's the landscaper.
He's a landscaper.
He's also working there.
He has work in there too.
Plants do, okay.
So, by.
He's not planting right now.
Well, we're seeing.
He's not outside.
So, by the eleventh, you're still doing all the things for mitigation. You go back and report on your progress. And at that meeting, you'll probably ask the selectmen about parking lot and delivery of buildings.
Okay.
I mean, I need, I think I need some time to get the building permits from Sam, and that's going to take some time.
So, can I, hold on.
More, more needs, before I can do that, I got to kind of.
So, I think our request would be tonight to allow us to move forward and wrap the permit and schedule it all with the understanding that if we haven't satisfied you on the eleventh, you have the right to tell us now. Because it's just runway time, it's the ability to file a permit.
Take your risk.
It's.
I wouldn't mean to interrupt, but.
I agree with you a hundred percent.
The condition that you'd have to vote on would be a hundred percent clear that, you know, you're essentially doing staging. You're getting prepared for something that may never happen.
Building inspector, looking at the plans, sign off.
You pull the plug on it, and you've done it.
Correct, correct.
It's a hundred percent at present.
End of the day, I'm taking all the rest of the care.
Right.
Just like if I don't get the C.O., you know, I don't, I'm taking all the rest.
If you don't do the project, exactly, you stated on, exactly, you're not going to be in it.
At the end of the day, you could vote this back. If I didn't do it.
Everybody pretty concerned, I have a couple of pro forma things I need to go through, like reading all the other letters and things like that. Is that what we have to do that now? You want to say? Where my board that they allow him to start the planning for the Morton buildings?
Be specific, just in terms of the increment that the board might be in. So, that's sort of planning, you know, to, very, buildings are not working. I think we could tell even, if the board were to take it all, it was really.
Right, give us, give us.
Give us link.
I'm not a builder, tell me, tell me what you do spend a ton of time.
Obtain the permits and are you thinking maybe we should be saying and start to proceed building the building or just get.
Prep the groundwork?
Yeah, I mean, if there's site prep work, ground work, and it's allowable, let's state exactly that. Delivery, is that allowable? Let's be specific.
We're going to have a meeting before delivery, so.
I think, I think, and Eric, I'm speaking against your interest. Allowed to do everything up till delivery of the building to the site, unless and until we come back here on the eleventh and the board is convinced that we are making appropriate progress.
Are we going to get a site walk in here before or not?
We can have one.
Or is Joe going to be on it?
Well, I think, Joe will be out three times a week.
So, he can be, all right?
Yeah. Or you can schedule something.
You want to do one before the eleventh?
So, that's just seventh and eighth, eighth and ninth. Is that right? Eleventh is Tuesday.
That's right.
It's your date, yeah. Come on, schedule Saturday, another signing, site work.
The eighth looks to be the twenty-ninth, that's a week from the Saturday. What do you think?
That's rely on Joe.
I think that'd be that.
That's, we'll rely on Joe.
Yeah, go.
So, maybe just go through these letters, and then we'll then ask.
More emotion.
Let's go back, let's just go back.
I think we've got to hold on. Let me give this chat. Okay, this is, Good morning Martha. At review of the latest plans for the proposed golf facility in Scotland, I would like to offer the following suggestions. The width of the road might be increased over the current twenty feet by two, at the two curves to allow fire apparatus to navigate the curve safely. If this is not possible, make the shoulders, hard shoulders at the two curves to allow fire apparatus to navigate the east or east curve safely. Thank you for reaching out sincerely and respectfully, Douglas Jonathan, required, Farming Chief. This is August twenty-fourth from Laura Hanlon to Planning Board Administrator Assistant and to myself, Planning Board and Board of Selectmen. My husband and I had planned to participate in site walks scheduled on Saturday, eight twenty-five, but we are out of town dealing with a family matter and unable to make it back. It is my understanding that balloons were planted for the site walk to mark the expected heights and locations of buildings with light fixtures. Although the balloons might have some value in showing the top of a building of the height of the light fixture, it is our opinion that the sight of a balloon has no value whatsoever with regard to evaluating the light intrusion to our property that will emanate from the multiple LED lights atop fifty-foot poles to be situated at target green number five, that will be just over the ridge in our front yard. I have heard the engineer repeatedly state that there will be no light trespass. This is, of course, a matter of utilizing convenient semantics to go along with a light diagram that shows a bunch of little zeros on a piece of paper. I guarantee you that those lights will surely intrude upon our property. I have heard Board of Selectman member Jeff Walker state that the recent public hearings state that the board never envisioned that abutters would be protected from the lights. He also state, stated, stated that he would be able to imagine what the lights would look like by seeing balloons hung. The first statement is outrageous, and the second is absurd. When both boards approved the special permit in the site plan approval granted, subject to several conditions, the right and responsibility of the boards to review the light subject to pole locations and evaluate the potential harm to abutting properties from those lights was one of the most important conditions. It is our position that the boards can only fully responsibly respond to the abutters by evaluating the proposed lighting by viewing an actual mock-up of the actual planned LED lights atop fifty-foot poles at the exact intended locations in the dark as viewed from our house and front yard. Anything less, including balloons, is not only a poor substitute, it is unacceptable to us and should be to you as well. This should not be very difficult for the engineers of lighting subcontract to arrange it and should be required of both boards. Morning, this is from Deb, Deb Carboni, right? Yes. Morning Martha, I hate to be a pain.
I feel like you're going to read that letter.
See, I have to read it verbatim. But there should be no work at the site until eight, right? Well, this morning I could see trucks moving and a lot of loud banging, not sure if it was tailgates being taken down. I just don't understand why, why it is that they have to start any work before, before 8 o'clock. Why are they starting or getting ready today at 7:30? This also happened yesterday. Thank you so much, Deb Carbone. And that's all the letters that we have. And so finally, I guess I would like to, are there any other comments from board members on either side before I ask for a public comment?
Can we respond to that? Hold, hold two for a second, hold two for a second.
I think there was the discussion of whether or not the, what enforcement needs to be taken when violations of the plan occur. And so, at present, no fines have been levied and we have not stopped work again. But Alicia contacted me earlier and said she was very frustrated and I wanted to find out where the board was at. As far as violations are concerned and what thoughts are.
I'd like to break this up and pump it a little bit. I'd like to go back to first what we were just discussing about September 11th. And are we, do we need to make a vote? Does our board need to vote as far as allowing them to do anything before our next meeting on September 1?
They're asking us to, well, they're asking us to, well, we have to find out exactly what it is they're asking. But it's, I think it's you guys, isn't it? Or is it both?
I think the state prevents the building inspector from issuing the permits. So I guess we would like the state lifted to allow the building inspector to review and approve permits. And I think that's probably all we need. And then we would want to know at the hearing on the 11th if we comply, and I, I guess technically you don't have to vote on it right now because you could vote already again on the 11th. But we would wanna know that on the 11th, if we complied with all that and we had the permits issued, if the state would be lifted on the 11th so that the building could be brought onto the site on the 17th and construction could commence on the 24th.
Well, I don't think you have to vote now. Do you? Brian?
Not on that component of it.
No.
So just to lift the, the state will allow the building inspector review and issue the permits?
Right, and I had actually jotted down, I don't mind, just ran this for a suggestion. What you're looking to do is not only submit a permit application, have it reviewed and approved, but only to the extent that you're looking to do certain preparation work related to parking lot prior to the delivery and construction of the buildings.
Correct. He would have to permit the building.
Right, you have to permit it, but it's necessarily giving the right to actually proceed on that. It'd only be to allow the permitting to go through so that you can actually follow through on it.
Correct, so you would be, you essentially would be letting the state halfway.
And sending the footings.
Yeah, I think the footings, okay. The footings, six feet is not enough.
We can advance the building anyway.
No, they set the footings when they get there.
The link can't be set on the footings for several days after each port, so we need to set the footings first.
But meanwhile, just to clarify, we still get to continue with the grading or continue with the.
That, that stays with.
Make everything, you know.
You don't have to vote on any of that, that's, we're just, this is just a reporting back on that and going through the things that we, we come back and go through on everything that the state's already lifted on. So really, the only additional lifting the state would be they determine the footings, I guess.
Okay, we obviously have to resolve these things, but before we do, does anybody in the audience wanna say something on this?
Deb Carbone, 123 Scotland Road.
I'd like you to come up just a second.
I'm reporting on the horrific dust that was there today. There was no water truck, there was no watering down. From the time you guys started this morning, I mean, I even yelled over to the guys and somebody yelled back and said, hey, some ladies yelled.
There was water, wasn't there?
Well, it was horrific. We could not sit outside, we could not sit by a pool, my husband couldn't walk. It was horrific, worst we have ever seen it. Something needs to be done. I want this project moved on, it's boring, it's ridiculous, but something needs to be done. I cannot, it's not fear for us to live this way as far as the dust goes, the noise, it's one thing if we're inside, it doesn't bother us if we're outside, it does. But we know it's there, so it's, it's not an issue. But this dust, as I heard from one of the technicians, it wasn't taken care of to it at all, at all. I mean, I was up in the back of the field, behind my shed, by my, my deck, it was awful. I mean, I called several times. I stood by the perimeter, I never saw any water. Well, they didn't do it constantly because it was awful. I had people down to sit by the pool, we couldn't do it. So something needs to be done for us. This is getting to be ridiculous. It needs to be addressed, Eric. I know you and I spoke the other day about the time that it was starting, we need to get that cleared. Something needs to be done because the abutters are being left out and we need something to be resolved. It has to be done. If you want this to go forward and if we all need to live peacefully when this happens, abutters are not being taken into consideration. And I'm done, it's almost two years, we're done. So something needs to be done or I'm gonna do something.
So, Martha, I would like if you checked with Joe, if he was back out there today and he could confirm whether watering was or wasn't taking place. It's not for you to sit here and argue with Mrs. Carbone. If they were, you know, dealing with us, they were dealing with us. I will point out, you know, on a 99-degree, back-to-back 99-degree windy day, you could probably water from dusk till dawn and you're still gonna have dust. But, I mean, at the end of the day, the proof's in the pudding, Joe comes out there. If you could ask, and if Joe wasn't out there, then shame on us.
I mean, Martha, when you hear there was a water truck, correct?
There was yesterday.
Yes, so.
Quick question.
Yeah.
When you're watering, you're just watering the road that you're traveling on, right?
With the hose or watering?
So that when you're moving the machines off the road, that's where the dust is coming from, right?
Yeah, and the hammer and this.
So we gotta.
We have a hose, so.
And all of it is a tough thing to do there, would you wait till the wind moves the other way? I don't know on that one. You know, you can't water the whole site.
The truck is watering the road, the hose is watering, the hose is watering the site. So they're watering both the road and the site, they're using a truck and a hose. But it's a large site and again, on back-to-back 99-degree days with wind.
And I'm not arguing who's bad. I mean, I'm not here to say that it was bad because of the heat, the heat's gonna break. We know that's gonna break Friday. We're gonna water all day tomorrow, get it situated. You know, I'm, I get, I'm doing, and Colosi's doing the best he can with the watering and we're on it all day. And we'll be on it tomorrow to mitigate it and hopefully when the weather breaks, it will soften it up. I mean, on Monday, you're dealing with mud, so it, it goes quick and that's site changes. So we're washing tires on Monday and then all of a sudden, we're, we're dealing with dust on Tuesday, Wednesday. So it's, every day it's changing.
Which speaks to my point about, we gotta get that site.
Gotta get it done, we gotta get it done.
That's exactly it, yes.
We're working from the hours that you've given us, all that, we gotta done.
Let's talk about hours. So there's been a truck there two mornings.
Actually, Alicia, I wanna see if there's any other comment from the folks right here first.
In regard to dust or other?
Any, anything to do with this project? Any public comment about this project?
Jane Cunningham, 143 Scotland Road. I, I can confirm that the trucks are out there. I mean, yes, was Monday, it was 7:29 when the tailgates were slamming and, you know. Tuesday morning was 7:22, I had to get off the deck and come in the house. But it was like very, very loud and went to the kitchen window and could see there were two trucks leaving, a truck coming in and a third truck going. So there, there were a lot of trucks coming in and out, so I'm not having the dust issues that they have, but I have a lot more trees and whatnot around my property, so, other than that. You know, I'd just like to see, hurry up and get it done and stabilize that because, you know, we're still waiting to see what the bottom driveway will look like, how that's gonna affect my area. And that, I kinda wanna see and get that done as well, so, I mean, just like to, you know, have him finish it up and it's be done with the law. It's gonna look nice when it's done, it'll be lovely, it'll be peace and quiet, I'm sure. Lots of wildlife will still come through, but we just, you know, meanwhile, it's, it's not always great for it, so.
Brian, could you go over the language that you thought we needed to maybe go down? Didn't you put something?
I did, indeed, Mr. Chair. I've written it down, although not maybe.
So, I need to, so invite you to read it out loud. I want you to read it out loud.
Suggested motion, obviously. Adder subtract or modify as you see fit, as you hear comments on, here it goes. To allow site preparation and related preparation, including footings for parking lot and building and to allow the building inspector to review and approve permits therefore, but not to allow the delivery or construction of the building. This provisional approval is subject to reconsideration on 9/11/15 and the applicant is advised that any action taken or cost incurred pursuant to this condition is at the applicant's risk.
Thank you. Do both boards have to vote on that? Do they have to reappropriate themselves? Okay.
Participant?
Yes.
I don't know, at least for me, if we really solve the dust issue.
We have it.
We have it as a condition and they just haven't done it correctly. So it's up to Joe.
But are we moving along and are we kind of forgetting that the dust issue?
Well, I was gonna come back to that because I guess the question that I have, I've been out of the building trades for a while now, is such measures shall be consistent with accepted industry practices. So I don't know if accepted industry practices are that on a hot day you can make dust or if there are ways either to stop work on hot days, which I don't believe is the case because nobody stops working ever. Or if there are systems that are not being used that should be in place on 90-plus degree days. So I don't know where we find that information, I don't currently have it. I think some of it may be a question for Sam.
Or Joe.
Or Joe, or both. And it may be that if they can't control the dust, they pay the fine for making dust.
And also pay a fine for starting work before they pay the fine?
Yeah.
And we have a discussion with Sam about enforcing that. That's one way to address it.
So I think we gotta deal with them as separate issues unless you wanna tie them together. My feeling is that we need to keep the, the site work going because we need it stabilized. But to me, that's the priority.
Michelle.
I think most of the neighbors feel that, but, I mean, you can get dust like it is today or was today, that's, that's like, so I don't know.
So I, I think what I would like to do is ask for a report from Sam and Joe about what the acceptable industry standards are and inform the applicant that should they not be met, we will expect Sam to use the enforcement powers that he has.
So just to piggyback on that, I went through my notes and I have a timeline of complaints with the dust. On July 13th, I have a complaint of dust and I think that's when we asked to have the watering truck come out there. July 17th, I know hammering started at 7:17 a.m.
Oh, didn't we have a time change?
No.
You're relying us to start at 7?
No, no, July 17th, that ended on 7/11.
Okay, so there was mis, there was misunderstanding with that situation?
Whatever may be, that was a violation. On 8/27, the trucks were there at 7:30.
So the trucks, you know, so the trucks are pulling off of Scotland Road. The truck guys pull up, they start at 6, obviously, from their side or 6:30. They pull up and for safety reasons, we bring them on site. They're not supposed to dump, they're supposed to get in position and at 8 o'clock dump. There is no site work whatsoever, machines, hammering start before 8 o'clock. So the issue is these trucks dumping. We get the, and it's been addressed with the contractors over and over again, it's not gonna happen again, obviously, from what happened the other day. I'm well aware of that, but that's the issue. We're bringing them from a safety, keep them on Scotland Road, it's ridiculous, and these guys don't listen.
So the violation was on 8/27, there was trucks at 7:30. On 8/28, there was trucks again at 7:30. And today, 8/29, there was, there was dust again with not significant enough.
But is it a violation for the trucks to be on the site? They're not made, they're pulling off for safety.
It's, they need to time it so that they don't arrive on site until 8 o'clock.
I mean, okay, so.
You know, we don't, you should just be able to read her stuff.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, right, right, like.
So that's, yeah, so that's, that's just what I've got for a timeline just from July 13th.
Yeah, Jessica Carbone, 121 Scotland Road. I just wanna say that it's not, it's not about the trucks going on to the site, it was them dumping. Because the tailgate slamming against the dump truck at 7:15 in the morning is really loud. And I, I just wanted to clarify for Alicia, not for you, that, that, that was out of my concern. It wasn't as much them coming on to the site because Scotland Road is super busy first thing in the morning. I wouldn't want those trucks lined up there. There is, I hear honking and there's some scary situations happening there during the morning because people just don't pay attention.
I own that, I, I get it, it's not gonna happen again, it's been addressed with everybody. If it does happen again, obviously, whatever the situation is, I take responsibility, I take the final word, it won't happen again. But that's all that's going on, not only Colosi and his guys are not turning on equipment. They might be there greasing something, getting their plans, but they're quiet. And I think they can agree that, like, those machines aren't going. It's all about the deliveries. And the issue that happened with that company, they do not come on site anymore. So going forward, that's not gonna happen. And I can personally guarantee it, and if it does, I will take full responsibility. When it happened that last time, I was bringing my daughter to her first day of school, I wasn't there, okay, so.
Okay, so.
That's the only thing that's happening.
So I guess what I'd like to talk to my board about is what we wanna do to ensure that, that this doesn't happen and that, that there's, I just, I just hear over and over again, I'll talk to them, it's okay, it's okay, it's okay, I'll talk to them, it's okay, and it keeps happening. So I, I would like to see if we could possibly put some kind of a deterrent.
Well, that's why I was suggesting the outreach to Colosi and Sam as far as encouraging a report about the conditions, especially as regards to dust because I don't understand the, the legal parameters there well enough. And encouraging him to use his enforcement authority, you can't tell him how to do it, but ways that violations occur.
I don't want, I do not, I don't know what we, I think, I think the only choices that we have are a cease and desist or fines.
Right, yes.
And I do not wanna do another cease and desist, I really don't because I want this project to keep moving because it's not gonna get completed if we do another cease and desist. So I guess, can we talk about fines? Is this appropriate?
Discuss. So neither of these boards issue fines or anything like that, but you can certainly support and encourage your enforcing officials. And in fact, this board's already adopted condition 18, which states exactly that, so the board can certainly reiterate that.
What is condition 18, can you read it?
Yeah. I have it. Should, mission 18, should any of the above conditions not be met and or not be timely met, the board may revoke these provisional approvals and if it does, the applicant shall cease from conducting any provisional approved activities at the site and shall forthwith stabilize the site as is and install or deploy appropriate stormwater and erosion control measures suitable for the fall, winter and spring seasons. Furthermore, should any of the above conditions not be met and or timely met, the board encourages the appropriate agents of the town to undertake enforcement as may be appropriate and necessary to ensure that the site is stabilized and the town's and public interest is protected from any harms that are or may be caused by the site being in its condition at that time. So we adopted these conditions and we can further clarify for Sam what we expect.
Okay, thank you.
So at this point, I'd like to, to move to adopt the language as Brian has presented. You guys are comfortable with it? You guys are comfortable with it?
One more time, right? And George, listen to this, this will vote in a greater favor, you say you have it.
To allow site preparation and related preparation, including footings for the parking lot and building, and to allow the building inspector to review and approve permits therefore, but not to allow the delivery or construction of the building. This provisional approval is subject to reconsideration on 9/11/18, and the applicant is advised that any action taken or cost incurred pursuant to this condition is at the applicant's risk.
So moved.
A second. My board about that? All those in favor? Aye.
Did I give a motion?
Someone?
Second.
Rachel, have you moved?
The language.
George?
Yes.
Okay, and I, two as well, so therefore it passes both of them. I've had it, guys. We have to continue it.
I've got a lot of questions, because I do want to, I want to make sure that we're doing the right thing. We are, it is okay if the trucks come on, so long as everybody is clear, no work is being done.
They don't want it to be boring or hugging.
So, I, I got it. Is it okay if we put on a water generator and start watering the site at like 7:30?
Yes.
So you're going to hear the noise of generator?
Yes, that's fine.
Generator is not that loud.
Exactly. Okay, so we want to get out, we'll get it started every single morning before it goes. And it is okay, trucks pull on, we're perfectly clear with them. If they do anything, we're just fined, and we get it, it's about doing the right thing.
Yeah, it's just the, the tailgate slamming.
Right.
Yeah.
And that's all we want, too, because we just, we want it, you know, we want it.
And then we will pre-water, water the site every morning.
Perfect.
Okay.
It's supposed to rain. Then it'll be raining.
So if someone could make a motion about that?
Motion?
On the site and the dust has...
Clarification on dust control is... How do you even do these days?
We can close the station for the industrial standards.
So we understand what to enforce, oh, definitely.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
The only thing I'm saying is we're encouraging them to get moving, let's get this done. Now, all of a sudden, we're putting a blanket over them and slowing them down. We got it across here, okay, that's my only point, by not allowing them to get on-site on time, by, you know.
No, they are on-site.
I'm just saying, it's going to tread lightly here, okay? We have all the time.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, can I have a motion to continue the public hearing until September 11th? That's seven with the key.
So moved.
Can I get a second? All those in favor? Aye. Can I get a motion to close the meeting?
I know that we closed meetings.
Sorry. All those in favor?
Can I have a motion to continue the planning board section of this till 9/11/2018 at 7:15? Seconded? Do I have to have a roll call? Okay. George, how do you vote?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Rachel, John, all approved. And so I also call to, that's it? 7:15, right. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you everyone else for your patience with this first public hearing. Thank you.
Judges? Yeah, George, it's a favor.
Good luck, guys.
Thanks, everyone, for waiting, appreciate it. How are you? Okay, are you doing well? Sorry, how are you?
How are you?
Good.
How are you?
So I'd like to open or reopen the continued public hearing, special permit application to dog daycare training and pet groups. 35 Downfall Road, Mathr, 41 Lot 60, at the Jennifer Ford Seacoast Canine. So we do have a new communication from Jennifer, sorry. And I'm wondering if you would just give us a summary of what you, you won't have this, a summary of what, what your changes are, and maybe just summarize your proposal and the changes that you've made, I think is the best way to do it, okay?
Sure. The original proposal, you mean?
Yeah, the original, how this is different, and then introduce yourself to the people.
Okay. So the original proposal, or I suppose the continuing proposal, is to expand our current business. Just expand the, that's easier. So our current business, which is training, dog walking, pet sitting, and play groups, and expand the number of dogs and the number of employees that we can have on-site during the week. The hours will stay the same, nine to three, Monday through Friday, but rather than having employees come to the property and then leave, and then come back, and then leave, having them come and stay on-site and sort of condense our services so that we can have groups that just stay, you know, similar to doggy daycare, which is why this is the permit that we're asking for. Currently, on the weekends, we do training classes off-site where we rent a doggy daycare space in Amesbury. And so I guess our amended proposal would be to reduce the number of classes on-site at the farm, rather than three classes with eight dogs per class, to do three classes with six dogs. And then all the classes could be held between nine and five on Saturday, and that's 36 trips on Saturday. So essentially, no business traffic would be generated on a Sunday. Our mid, you know, our Monday through Friday services will still just be employees, so clients won't be bringing dogs to us and driving them themselves. The weekend would be the clients bringing their own dogs, staying for the hour, and then driving home, so that's the 36 trips on a Saturday. We also amended that we would essentially create magnets for our cars so that our, the neighbors could distinguish what traffic is coming to our house and what's going to our neighbors or to other businesses on the road. So they would just say something like, Seacoast Canine Driver. I previously offered, and again, would be willing to just give my personal cell phone number to all the residents on Downfall Road, so if they saw one of our drivers who was driving unsafe, we would be able to have disciplinary action. Our employees have already signed a code of conduct. So it's already agreed to that if they're driving in an unsafe manner, they go through a two-week probationary period where they are knocked down to minimum wage until they can prove that they're driving safely on the road. And then I think the last thing after the site visit that we amended was that if we get to a point where we grow to the capacity that we can't pick all our dogs up Monday through Friday in a single trip, that we would purchase, I would purchase business vehicles that could accommodate the numbers so that our employees aren't going back to driving to us, leaving, and coming back again. So the midweek, Monday through Friday program would be reduced from the number of traffic trips that we take right now, and then the Saturday classes are reduced from the original proposal.
Thank you. So the Saturday number goes from 96 trips to 36?
Originally, it was up to 96 over Saturday and Sunday.
And Sunday.
Yeah. And so now it's 36 Saturday only, so that Sunday is no business traffic.
And then how many trips during the week?
Would be six employees, so going both ways, 12.
12. How many do you do now?
I would say we do twice that because they come and go, morning and afternoon, so.
So you're...
Twenty-four.
That's, so are you suggesting that the proposal that you have is reducing the number of trips during the week?
During, yeah.
And what's that number again? What does it go, 12 to, from 24?
So right now, if we had a like...
It's 24 to 12.
Right, I would say at maximum capacity, which isn't a typical day for us, but if every employee came and left, came and left, that would be 24.
Okay.
Not including myself or Dory because we're residents, so.
So 24 to 12, and then plus 36 on the weekends, so the total traffic impact is plus 24. Am I right?
Twenty-four each weekday.
Now, that's what I'm trying to come to grips with. What are the total number of trips per day?
Monday through Friday would be 24 at a maximum.
So for a week, it's like 96? Five, what is it, 510? 120? 120? Okay. And that's going to go to 12?
Daily, yes.
Daily?
Monday through Friday.
So that's 60, so it's in half. 120 to 60. And then on the weekend, there are none?
Right now, yeah, we rent a space somewhere else. So the, I guess, it would depend on how far I'm going, myself and Dory.
So did I get this right? Rachel, it was 96, it's now down to 36 for the weekend, right? But I'm talking at the total, because one of our criteria in the special permit is the total impact on traffic. And what I'm trying to determine is what's the total number of trips today, and what is the total number of trips that have been projected? And Martha, do you have this? I bet it is that there are 120 trips per, per week.
Per week now.
Now, and she's proposing 60, and then she's adding 36. So the total number of trips goes from 120 to 96.
Right. Saturday trips. Everything is Monday through Friday.
That's an important criteria.
And the other amendment was Martha gave me the correct site map with our boundary line as far as where the driveway is shared, so I included the updated parking, you know, plan essentially, so that we don't cross into the shared parking space.
Rachel, do we have a second?
I think from the original proposal, she's made quite an adjustment to be flexible in the business plan. I think on the Monday through Friday that I trust that she can exert enough influence on her employees. And I think the, apparently, they think so, too.
I brought them so they can be aware.
And I guess I was hoping to hear some flexibility on the weekends because I thought that was a kind of a large request.
Peter?
I would agree, I think they've put some previous modifications, and the weekend reduction is perhaps is significant, from what was proposed, and taking accountability both with identifying the vehicles and the employee, I think is also responsible. And I think continuing to go into discussions with your neighbors is a paramount purpose.
George?
Yeah, Joe, I think one of my concerns is what would somebody reasonably expect to have as traffic on a non-connective residential road? Reasonable expectation? And this is traffic, I think, I think it does.
So, so, it's difficult if you're not in here. So would you take into account the number of trips that are being generated today versus, versus what's being proposed, or that your criteria would focus mostly on a residential street with...
It's not a generic residential street. It's not a connector road, it's not, it doesn't feed into anything else except street and a neighborhood. And what it, first of all, living in that neighborhood might expect to have traffic every day. It would be a low number, low number or high number of traffic going through.
Okay.
This is still on the high side.
So what you're suggesting is what the existing business that's there is on the high side?
Right.
Okay. All right, thank you. So I think that we're at a point where we want to invite some comments from neighbors and audience participants, and so I'd ask you, as I recognize you, to come up here and give me your name, and let's hear what you have to say. Yes?
My name is Joni Hovin. I live on Downfall Road, I lived here for 54 years.
I think we had an email from you.
Yes, you did. First of all, the road is not zoned for business. And when you said other businesses, I'm not sure what you mean by that.
We're not the only business registered on Downfall Road, according to the town law.
Okay, I'm not aware of that, so just to be clear.
Neither am I. Sorry.
So it is a resident, my complaint, or my, my observations are, first of all, it's a residential street. It's a dead-end street. There is no way out. The way you go in is the way you go out. You go by my house on the way down, you go by my house on the way out. It's not zoned for business. That's my understanding, that it's not zoned for business. Weekend business of any kind, I'm opposed to, because people who work all week long, there are people who go to work every day and come home every day, but the weekends are when they need to relax. They need to have some rest, they need, you know, not to have a thousand cars going down the street. Since I moved in, as I said in my email, two houses have been built. And the amount of traffic going by, now I realize people have more than one car, but there are not that many, there aren't more houses, in fact, one house was taken down. My heart goes out to you, because I think you are in a difficult situation. However, it would have been prudent, before you bought the house, to find out if it was zoned for business.
I bought the house knowing it was not.
Okay.
I was going to buy a house, no matter what.
Okay, all right. So my proposal would be, if you are renting space in Amesbury for whatever it is you're renting space, that that should be leading to your business, not on our residential dead-end street, which is narrow. I like that it's narrow because it's a dead-end street, and that's what it's intended to be. So I don't know of any other business on the street, and I take exception to that. And I just, I totally am opposed to Downfall Road being zoned for business.
Thank you. Yes?
My name's Avery Woodworth, 19 Downfall Road. Two of the licensed businesses are mine and my wife's. Two of the licensed businesses are mine and my wife's. I'm working as construction, she's Lizzie Soap. When we got our business licenses, we were clearly told by the selectmen that we could not have customers come down to our house to buy product or sell product or anything like that. I'm not quite sure how you got your original business license for six employees going up and down the road and having an office that's not a home office. That's like a legit business. And again, I have to say with Joanne, it's nothing against you. I feel bad that you're in this situation, but it's our street, it's, the traffic has increased immeasurably since you have started your business down there. So I don't understand how you even got the license for that. So that's a question, I guess it's a rhetorical question at this point, but I'd also like to know, you were denied the original application by Sam Jocelyn, and I'm not sure what section ninety-three dash seven point M of the code is. Why did he deny the original?
It needs a special permit. Needs a special permit.
Part of the application process.
This part, this use is, you're right, it's not a business, it's a special permit granted by the planning board, so...
Sam takes it to you.
Takes it to us.
Yeah, that's part of the process.
Part of the process.
I didn't know. So the other thing is I would go back to what you said, what you said about it is it's a special perm, and a special permit is supposed to have only beneficial things for the neighborhood, supposed to help all the locals, it's not supposed to be detrimental to the neighborhood. Most of her clients are Newbury. She's servicing Newbury Court and other people, there's one or two locals that she services. I don't see how that helps us in our tiny little neighborhood where we like to walk and hang out, and we have cats that run out and skate. Okay, that's not the end of the world, but those things will...
May I just ask, is that assertion correct, that the primary number of clients is from Newbury Court?
I would say the majority of them are, we service Newbury West, Newbury Newbury Court, but Newbury Court has the highest population yet, the higher percentage.
Okay, I would argue, I would, for knowledge, how many actual biking residents are your customers that you go back and they go on the same thing back to your house?
Guests.
Versus, versus...
Two from Drive House.
Yeah. Mine, I'm stuck on maybe half. I would say we have at least a dozen daily clients. I mean, we're walking and, and our pets are in, like... We could definitely look it up.
The majority is not, is not our department, I guess is what I'm saying. And it, it would probably be best to read what the actual criteria are.
I'm gonna do that.
Nothing else.
No, not now.
Well, that's all right.
I'll do it after we hear from others. Who gives orders? No. Yes, please.
So John Hatch, twenty-nine Downfall, and mine, but I'm getting traffic because she just wants to go. I actually, I was looking at it a different way than some of the neighbors. I was, I'm actually more, I don't see the traffic first of all, because I'm a step way back, so I can appreciate the traffic in the neighborhood. But my bigger concern was, you know, I kind of wanted to see it approved because I want to make sure it gets inspected, I want to make sure that there's sanitation, I want to make sure, like, what happens if she doesn't get approved? I would imagine she has representation, there'll be, there'll be an appeal, that'll cost us money from the town perspective. I'd rather see the money go into the road, speed limit signs on the road, I think we could all appreciate that we need a couple of speed limit signs on the road. And quite frankly, if she doesn't get what she wants on her property, she's got the next neighbor's property as well, that I'm sure she could dial up and put some, some stuff there, and that would even triple the traffic. And I don't think, none of us want to see that because that could very easily happen. Well, she got one special permit, I'm sure Larry could get one too.
Excuse me.
You know? So I'm just saying...
It's great, but the problem is it's being recorded, and we have comments that come from no one. What was that?
I don't know.
So if you would like to say something and respond, that'd be great, and you can come up and do that, all right? Thank you.
So I was just thinking, my perspective, fix the road, put the, put the signs in, regulate it, we can manage it that way. And if there's a traffic mitigation plan, I'm fine. Otherwise, I think, you know, we continue to figure it out.
Great.
That's why, that's what I was doing.
Thank you.
Just a little different.
Thank you, it's okay. Who else?
Hi.
Hi.
Tom Rogers, fifteen Church Street. I live at the corner of Church and Downfall.
Uh huh.
Been there for thirty-five years, and I'm a little concerned about all this traffic, which has probably quite drubled in the last thirty-five years because the kids grow up, maybe they have more cars and whatnot, but now I'm here and you want to have all these classes on weekends, which could be as much as what, forty-eight trips on a Saturday?
Thirteen.
You want more cars coming by, and that's crazy. I mean, I want to come home and relax in the weekend, I don't need more traffic. We have a stop sign at the corner, people come down Church Street, right through the stop sign around the corner like it's not even there. So as much as you think you can control the traffic, you can't. The more cars you have, the more problems there is. Signs aren't going to help. I, I, I know people speed down Downfall because we have three hundred feet of frontage on Downfall, and they hit the accelerator when they come around the corner. By the time they get to the end, they're doing forty miles an hour. People coming out of Johnson Lane, they have to be careful. It's, it's definitely become a problem.
Okay. All right, thank you. Who else? Yes?
Hi. My name's Ben Tymon, I'm Jenny's uncle and Lenny's attorney. Wanted to address a couple of issues. It's come up in the comments tonight, and I understand in the meeting on August first, which I wasn't able to make, I was, I'm out of town, that the traffic has increased markedly over the past, you know, thirty-five years or fifty years, and clearly that's not, you know, a burden that should be placed on Jenny or part of this process, as I think you alluded to, Mr. Chairman, it's this question of, you know, the increase from the status quo that this would potentially create. But on the question of whether or not there has been traffic issues on Downfall Road, I did want to put into the record some statistics. The Department of Transportation keeps crash statistics for every town. Any accident that's reported to the police for a city or town gets reported up to Mass DOT, and they keep statistics. They don't have the twenty-seventeen statistics available, it must, it takes them some time to compile all of them, but I did want to put into the record the twenty-fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen official Mass DOT crash statistics for Newbury. I have one to put into the official record if I could, Martha, and then another one. I apologize, I didn't make copies for each of you, but I did mark the one item that I wanted to mention that is easy enough to look at. These statistics show that in the last, in twenty-fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, there's been one and only one reported accident, not even on Downfall Road, but on Lenway, which is off of Johnson, which itself is off of Downfall. I have that marked, it was in twenty-fourteen, it was a collision, a non-fatal collision between a vehicle and a bicycle apparently. And apparently at the last, oh, it was in front of someone's driveway.
Was it Downfall?
Okay, well...
Was it on Downfall?
Well, Mass, maybe Mass DOT does, but these are the Mass DOT statistics. In twenty-sixteen, there was an accident reported in these statistics. It's described as seventy-five feet east of the, of the intersection of Central and Lunt, which is really, I think, the intersection of Church and Downfall. And that may have been where there was an issue with, with the chief's son, I'm not sure, but...
That was one.
Well, in any event...
There was one there though. My daughter, she got it back.
In December of twenty-sixteen. So statistically, and again, we're just, we're working with the data that's available publicly. Statistically, this is not a problem area. Now, with regard to the traffic increase or traffic effect of Jenny's proposal, as you've heard from her this evening, the actual number of trips per week will go down based on some of the numbers that you put forward in terms of the reduction in trips during the weekdays, because as she said, it'll enable her employees to come and stay for the day and have fewer back and forth trips. And again, to reiterate, customers are not using Downfall Road during the week. And then the thirty-six trips, which is a significant reduction from her original proposal on a Saturday, but those, that increase in trips is offset by a lot from the reduction that would occur during the week. Now, I do a lot of land use cases, obviously, the board members see a lot of proposals come forward as well, and I think we all know that again, statistically, thirty-six additional trips is, with due respect to the neighbors, statistically insignificant from a traffic impact point of view. I work with traffic, I have traffic engineers all the time. If the board were to require it, we could have one that I work with come and give this testimony, but I think we know from experience that thirty-six trips is, doesn't even, you know, move the needle even on a dead-end street in terms of a traffic impact analysis. And so I think that Saturday increase is not something that certainly should be weighed extremely heavily with due respect in terms of the board's analysis of this issue. So I did want to get those statistics on the record and make the comments on traffic, and I'm happy, as Jenny is, to answer the questions that the board of the public asks.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Anyone else from the neighborhood or otherwise want to say something?
I will.
Join the club. Do you want to sit? Do you want to sit? And introduce yourself, please.
John Robinson, seven Lenway Road. If any of this statistical data was being entered into the law, I'd like to clear off a few things. A reference to an incident of a truck and a bicycle, is that my driveway, which we have the most concern about, in Downfall, where five captains hit. Can't call yet a helping. Now, the car they hit was only doing twenty-five. And he hit, stopped. The incident on Lenway Road, I have no idea. Would we call that one?
That's your answer.
I've only lived there fifty-six years.
Well, they said London because they were rambling.
Okay. All right. I'd like to make sure that we understand, not that business has entrepreneurial blood of name everywhere. We're concerned about on a given weekend or evening in the summer, wearing bi-fil center that someone has placed their law. Can't walk on Central Street, it's too risky. People with baby carriers, we went through this in the last meeting. A lot of people stroll, probably as many as the cars you project. There's no way to get past the captain. And if there's two cars coming, we're thinking, I propose, thinking, traditional stop signs at the junction of Johnson and Downfall, something up that people are going to adhere to. Young people are schooled and learned about traffic control, vehicles, you present a vehicle. What repercussions do they face, the signing and agreement, terms of conditions? So what is it? What happens? If I call you and tell you Betsy Gomez was speeding, what are you going to do to Betsy Gomez?
She'll work at minimum wage for two weeks.
Huh?
She'll work at minimum wage for two weeks.
Okay. I understand that.
This is a letter she just sent to us.
Oh, okay.
Yesterday, or today.
Anyhow, the traffic has got to be slowed down, really true. The elderly people that walk out there all the time, that's one subject, little kids, like the third and fourth generation are there now, and it is just too much to watch what's going on right this moment. Not necessarily our drivers, what about the person that wants to go and inspect your facility, tell them to put their body there? Who's that person there? And what the customer are trying to do, it isn't business. We call you and tell you that car, and you say, that's one of my customers.
What precautions, yeah?
Yeah, I do. It's a business. The key is this, traffic flaw. We've got to control the traffic. Speed is a partial answer to it, stop signs are partial, all right? Even the stop signs, if you put in, like Downfall and Church Street, people are blowing through those all the time. I can absolutely tell you, most of them are not bi-fil. But the part of Mr. Rogers, there's lots of problems, lots of them. This has got to contribute to your own safety, to your drivers. So I'd like to see something addressed on the traffic.
Thank you.
It's not the answer, it's not the solution, but something I'd like to see.
Thank you, John. Someone else wants to say anything? Yes?
Well, as Jenny stated, I'm Dory Rosati.
Go on, Dory.
I'm Dory Rosati, thirty-five Downfall, I'm Jenny's office manager, so I can speak to the, I have some concerns with the staff. I'm the one that has been signing their code of conduct, and I enforce that. We have not had any issues with any of our staff, some of them are here tonight. Those are the folks you see driving down the road safely and carefully. Jenny and I are both out on the road, you know, supervising, we see them when they're coming in. I can attest that they drive like ten, fifteen miles per hour down that road. If there were any concerns, the code of conduct will state that they go down to a probationary period. Determination is obviously the next step if that, if a second complaint were to happen. It is not something that has been an issue with any of our staff, they do take this very seriously. Also, as far as, you know, babies and strollers and things on the road, I have the youngest baby on that road, and the night stroller up and down the road, I'm sure many have seen my husband and myself and the dogs. I, and when we do see traffic on the road, it's not something personally, you know, we've been able to have two cars pass us even when I'm out with my free dog, baby, and stroller, and my husband, without any concerns, and I have. So that's personal. I'm just the office manager and other than that, resident.
Thank you. Anyone else like to make a comment? Well, thank you all for your thoughts, and it's very helpful.
Can she have a phone up here?
Oh, who?
I just wanted to say there's no getting around the width of that street. Can I sleep from here?
I'm sorry.
I'm Kathy Calhoun, I live on Lenway Road, the Lenway. And the problem is, is no getting around the width of that street. It was, I would liken it to how when they were doing the bridge work, and I'm never going to live near the streets right over...
Main Street?
We couldn't go up and around, you could not, because of the narrowness of those streets, and that's, you know, that's not a one-way, you're not going to come out, and they restricted the flow of traffic, and the very reason for that, the real reason, was because it's a narrow road and cars going by can be a hazard for people pulling down the driveways and people walking on the street. And that's what I would liken, I, you know, compare this road to. Most of the issue was an influx of traffic, is that it's a very narrow one-way street. There's no way around it, unless the city was going, the town was going to do something, which I don't think any of us would really want.
You don't want the road wide?
No. No, then you couldn't anyway, the water and the, you know, water table and everything is an issue. But it's very narrow, and I, I don't see any way around it.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to add one thing under the, the road, my, on my property, Downfall Road, is thirteen feet, seven inches. Thirteen feet, seven inches. There are sections that are seventeen further up. That's a narrow swath, and that's where it dips down, and you can't see what's below you.
Yeah, I know exactly where that is. I know, I know, I saw you.
You did. That's the dangerous area right there.
Yeah. Board members have any further thoughts before I... Board members have any further thoughts before I continue?
I have lots of thoughts, but no.
Well, my thought, and George, is that there's a lot of, a lot of conflict at this. And I, and I don't know that we have all the information that I need to move forward yet. And I, and I, I guess the question I have a few is, how, how did you start this business?
It falls under the home occupied business, so...
So Sam gave you the permit to do it?
Right, so as long as smelling noise are not... Yeah, smelling noise aren't an issue, and non-residents are allowed to onsite in one time, basically.
And the special permit is just because of the size of the parking and employees?
Could I, could I add to that as well? As of right, she's allowed up to thirty dogs on the site at a time, and up to four employees. And that's what she's operating as now, is my understanding.
Home occupation is only two employees.
Two non-residents.
Right, so, yeah.
So Dory and I.
Including Dory and her, to make the four, but exactly two, two non-resident employees. But what she's asking for under the special permit is a one-third increase in the number of dogs from thirty to forty. That's in her proposal. And it would also be an increase from four, when you include Jenny and Dory, to six. So a one-third increase in the number of employees of what she is allowed as of right, right now. And so, when you look at it that way, it's the increase between what's allowed as of right and what is allowed by special permit. And I, I understand that the neighbors have said it's not zoned for business, but it is zoned where this type of business is allowed by special permit.
No, by right.
What's that for? No, what, what she's saying, the expanded businesses allowed by special permit. And so, it's not a significant increase in that respect. And the benefit here is that the changes that she's actually proposing, as Jenny has explained, will actually reduce the overall number of traffic trips per week.
I'm going to read, by the way, this, this special permit criteria, so you all understand, under which we, we are to... George, do you want to add anything at this point in time?
Just go ahead and read the conditions.
Okay. So, uses by special permit. By the way, that, as I'm reading here, well, I'll have to substitute. In appropriate cases and subject to appropriate conditions, safeguards and limitations on time or use, the planning board may grant an applicant a special permit to make use of the land or erect and maintain buildings or other structures thereon in accordance with provisions of Chapter forty-eight, Section nine of the general laws, if such used buildings or other structures are in harmony with the general purpose and intent of this bylaw and with the provisions stipulated in ninety-seven eleven C one, for the purpose of uses listed in ninety-seven dash three AM, which we all have memorized. Table of Use Regulations ninety-seven eighty-four, which we do have, is allowed by special permit by the planning board, provided the board finds, after a public hearing of which due notice is given to any party of interest, as defined in Section eleven of Chapter forty-eight of the general laws, that the proposed used building or structure is for the best interest of the town, is not injurious or obnoxious to the neighboring parties, will satisfy community need or convenience not otherwise being served, will not affect abutting and nearby properties by increasing traffic and unsweet parking, and that nothing connected with the used building or structure, such as machinery, vehicles, materials, supplies, equipment, and waste materials, shall be stored between the street line and the front line of the structures or building, nor be visible from the street. So, we have, the board has, in almost all the other special permits that we are involved with, whether it be solar arrays, or a variety of different, different things, we have usually a list of very specific criteria that we have to meet. This is very general, kind of listing of criteria. And honestly, since I've been on the board, we've never had this, this, because we, the Board of Selectmen gave us the power that they used to have, and so this was originally recommended for the Board of Selectmen. So, George, just, I'm kind of uncomfortable acting on this at this point in time. I want to review this criteria with you when you can be here, to make sure that we understand what the criteria are, and how the project meets it or doesn't meet it. Do you concur with that?
Yeah, I concur. I think a continuation to the next meeting, perhaps, if we have over time on the next meeting.
Yeah, I think so. When do we meet next?
September nineteenth.
Nineteenth, I think that's fine. Are you guys okay with the nineteenth?
I think so.
I do have a question, though. As to what our options are to look into, what's signs or that type of thing? Is that something that we could look into?
Yeah, we've had a preliminary discussion with our Director of Public Works. And there are all sorts of traffic management issues that we could look at. I don't know if they're doable. There's traffic calming, which is doable. There's posted signs, there's posted a number of things. Whether or not that should be the responsibility of the town or not, I'm not too sure. But, so those are the kinds of things that we would, I'd like to look at, and see if in fact they go, and do they answer these criteria? And if they do, then maybe that's not a bad idea. But if they don't, then maybe not. But I, I think we need to digest this a little further and feel more comfortable with it. So that, that's my feeling. Peter, you okay with that? But, yeah, I think there's all, there's, there are kinds of, because it sounds like you've got a traffic issue, irregardless of this function.
This is the problem, a lot of it started when she got her original license.
An original license.
Which nobody knew about, she moved in, and all of a sudden, the traffic flow increased. So, you said you had six employees, how many, four employees plus you two?
No.
Already?
That's the plan.
That's the plan. She, she's going to go, what the attorney just gave us was, she has four right now, including these two. And she's going to go to six employees, and she's going to go from thirty dogs to forty dogs.
On-site.
That's the plan. And then, but her traffic trips are going down from a hundred and twenty to ninety-six.
How are four employees doing that many trips a day right now? How are they, you only have two onsite, two onsite, non-resident employees.
On-site at any time. So our dog walkers come two at a time to get their supplies, then they go to walk their dogs, and then they go back, and then they have to leave again. Which is why we'd like to consolidate and keep them there, rather than only keep them two and having the rest come and go.
Do they walk their dogs on downfall?
No. You'd notice.
Okay, I'm going to hold on this, because we're going to have a... All right, so can I have a motion to carry this forward to the nineteenth? Nineteenth at what time? You have anything else that night? So let's do them first this time. It's for seven fifteen.
I agree that we continue, we'll carry on, special permit application, do a daycare to the nineteenth of September, seven fifteen.
George, you in favor of that?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
And I am as well. So we'll carry it forward to the nineteenth, okay? Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you all. Mel, do you want to wind your way up here? How you doing? Introduce yourself to the record, please.
Bill B. Francesco from Stoway Storage, Newbury, doing a business of Newbury Self-Storage.
And so, for those in both who are remaining in the audience and closed on TV, this is William D. Francesco, Stoway Storage, Newbury LLC, following the proposed changes to approved site plan for Newbury Storage, one thirty-one Newbury Port Turnpike, formerly twenty-three and thirty-one Slade Road.
Last time we met, I think the decision was made by the board to waive the seat of Conservation Commission.
Right.
Would say about it. We submitted this plan to the Conservation Commission, they were fine with the propane tank, they were fine with the additional storage due to the ledge in the constructed wetland. And then a slope was added back here to, we eventually want to park some cars and RVs and things back here. A slope was added to direct the water to these three catch basins, which would turn Dunkin' into here. And they were also fine with that.
So, did they need to order you a new order of conditions? Or what? Do you know anything about it?
I talked to Jen, Doug's out this week, but I talked with Jen. So my understanding is that this was submitted as a new notice and intent, they will be issuing
A new?
A new order of conditions.
I think that's correct, because I had very much.
Right, so, and that will get done when Doug gets back, since it's the works essentially. There's not a huge, huge rush.
So what are we, what are we asking, what are we being asked to do?
So I think, you know, Bill is basically asking for approval for modifications to the already...
For those, for...
Larger constructed wetlands, switching from gas to propane.
And then the area in the back. So I think the only thing I've ever had a problem with is the area in the back. And that was already, that was, you kind of went ahead and did that ahead of time. What, what, what Doug say about that?
He is wanting to make sure that the water, he was concerned about where the water was going to go. We had a meeting with Doug and Martha, you were there, right?
Yes, I was, yeah, with Chris.
And we talked about this, and Doug explained to Chris how he wanted, you know, the water to go into these catch basins. And then what he wanted me to do was, on an ongoing, on an ongoing basis, to make sure these catch basins were cleaned out.
Yeah.
So that will probably be in part of the special orders?
Yeah, that's probably what it is, yeah. So right now, as you know, using for rock storage, machine storage, there's some, there's some building components back here.
So I think, I mean, procedurally, Bill hasn't really submitted a formal application for the board to act on these changes. So I guess there are two things, whether the board would waive the application requirements and vote to approve this. And the other question is whether the board considers these to be major or minor modifications.
Concon considered them minor. Major.
Well...
A new application.
They required it.
Yeah, I had to do an application, because there's a buffer here between the wetlands and, you know, where I can do the work. And I think on this side, it's fifteen feet, and I think it's ten feet on this side. This side's not affected, it was just this side where I continued with the buffer. And, and this area in here was really the only thing that was affected, because that's within a hundred feet of the wetlands. So it was from here to here, you know, however, a hundred feet is out to here.
Martha, what's the difference procedurally for us, between a major and a minor?
Well, if it's considered major, then it has to be a public hearing, rather than, you know, actually submitting a formal application.
No matter what? Even with a minor one?
The board has waived that in the past. The board could vote to accept this as the application, or say that this is sufficient.
So I think we're talking about, he actually put a hundred-foot wetland buffer, this is the area we're talking about.
So he's, he's, he's already claimed that as a hundred foot, that didn't exist before?
No, the, what was approved was up to here.
Okay.
That, that's...
I get, I get it, I get it.
That was initially approved, but then when I cut down back in here, I could cut back, right back here if I want to. But I, I have to, you know, abide by the hundred-foot buffer unless I go in front of the Conservation Commission. So the area in question is here. From, from where, where we cut down, this area in here.
And if that's the Concon jurisdiction?
Right.
Yeah. Exactly right.
So it might be sixty feet of encroaching itself.
What, what do we, or what does the town benefit from going major or minor? I don't, I'm just unclear on it. And I, I don't mean that in any way, but being inquisitive.
I think it's really, really whether the board feels that there needs to be public input on this. So if it's major, then there would be a public hearing, and there would be input.
George, do you have any thoughts on, do you, I know you can't see the plan or anything, but we did go on the site walk. Were you there? Yeah, you were there.
And, and he did receive the plan.
And you did receive the plan, you, what, you want to weigh in on this?
I didn't, I missed what Martha just said, I couldn't hear you, Martha.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'm closer. Basically, that the difference is that if we, do we think that this kind of a change requires public input? And, because that's why you would have a public hearing.
That's right.
And, and so I, my immediate reaction was, I don't even remember anybody showing up to these. Am I right?
You're right.
I mean, no one showed up to these.
You know, as a practical matter, I think it could be treated as a minor.
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking, I'm thinking so too. But...
The grand tale of things, super big part of the project, not minor, drainage is important. But it's all well drained all the way around, we're just talking about a small portion.
Yeah. Peter?
It's kind of the back end of the project, the project has been developed out. And this was cleared, you know, as part of the project, and from that perspective, it's already been done. And when it comes time to put vehicles back there, I think that's going to be another discussion. Because that's something, I think, in the future that we'll talk about wanting to do.
What do you want, what do you want to put back there?
I already talked to Doug about it, and I have a number of people that have RVs, campers, stuff like that, that are looking to store them. So they'd just be parked on the gravel. And then eventually, if I continue, and this next phase is successful, you know, I'm going to have to deal with all this legend here and come back in front of the board if I want to permanent...
Yeah, if you want to permit more buildings. Rachel?
Yeah, I, I have troubles considering it being a major modification. And, you know, provided that it doesn't get paved, provided that it stays gravel.
Yeah, it's, we're not going to pave it. Paving line is going to go right up to where the original...
Because you could, you could park RVs on it, on the gravel.
Exactly. Exactly. The other thing that's part of this, we extended the guardrail beyond propane tank. And then I eliminated the guardrail here, so we could use this driveway for fire trucks.
Right, right. And what do you think?
You know, I would think that as long as it doesn't go any, any further than this, probably it could be reasonable to consider it a minor modification rather than going...
It's a function, it's, it's really dependent a lot on what he, as Peter was saying, what happens in the future.
Right.
If all of a sudden it's...
Yeah, if anything happens in the future, I have to come back and permit this.
But if this is just this?
Yeah.
I think we can, and the modification, what, what exactly is the modification? The fact, what was it in the original plan, and what is it now? Do you, can you articulate that?
Well, basically, the limit of clearing is right here, so this is a whole...
So we're permitting, we're permitting in...
Two thirds of an acre, I think we determined.
We're permitting, as a minor change, a limit of work that's already been done.
So the pre-change is one is the, the extension of the constructed wetland.
Right.
And the clearing beyond the original limit of work and the path for the propane tank.
Certainly the fir, the, the first and the third are in my mind, clearly minor. And it's really about doing, going beyond what was permitted in the first place.
Now, would I be permitted to cut down fees back here if I was a hundred feet from the wetlands?
You know, basically, the site, the original site plan had a limit of work shown. So anything beyond that limit of work should come in for approval before it happens.
So I think it's this area right here, Martha, that's within the 100 feet of the wetlands.
Well, it's really the whole... It's really the whole thing. Everything from this line.
From that line back?
Yeah.
Okay.
Which was the staging area? Or a second?
And that's what it turned out to be. And as Bill has said, he established his staging area for the first phase, but...
I never did it for the second.
I never did it for the second phase.
And I never thought about doing it for the second.
So, you know, ideally, what should have happened is, he should have come in as soon as he realized that. And he's kind of gone through the process, but...
Okay. So...
Would we be happier to put a condition on it? We'll approve it with the understanding that he doesn't go beyond this without coming back to us? Is that...
Yeah, absolutely.
You know?
Sure.
Or any other changes, I think. Right.
Yeah. And any changes should be approved before they happen.
No, there'll be any changes. I mean, hopefully, I have power in these three buildings tomorrow. And then these, hopefully, will be done in about three weeks. And then I just need to get it paved. And that should be it. I think it's guardrails and the fences.
Okay.
But there shouldn't be any further clearing either, without coming back.
Right.
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 And I think we can state that. I mean, in a quick summary is that it would be approved on the condition that no further work occurred within the area delineated on the plan. That any further clearing beyond the area of work and any work that would put any kind of structure or hardtop on there would need to come in for approval. So I'll say that as the... All right, is that good enough? And just say that that would be our position?
That's right.
Is that all right, George?
Yes.
Okay.
And I think the other thing is the board willing to accept this plan to waive the formal requirements?
Yes.
Accept this plan as an application.
So let's start with that. Can we get a motion to waive the requirements and then get the motion to... Did you take down what I said?
I can get it off the video.
We've got it on the video.
We can make a move to accept this plan as a waiver for a further application.
Okay. And, yeah, second?
Second.
George, how do you vote?
Yes.
I vote yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Then a second on... What did I say? An approval of the plan as presented and that it be considered a minor modification with the proviso that no further work go beyond the area of limits right now and that no further construction occur in the gravel area. And if any construction occurs and any structures or hardtop would be put in there, the applicant will come back before us.
So...
Okay. George, how do you vote?
I think it's acceptable.
Oh, okay. Oh, second. Sorry. I have a call. George?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
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 Okay. Want these rolled, Martha, or folded?
Rolled, fine. I'll fold them. And so then what just said?
Oh, you do?
Yeah, don't we have a continuation or an extension of the original permit?
Yes, until June of next year.
Right. And that will be... Probably won't need to, but it's...
The original permit had five...
Right, so the...
And retroactive to June.
Oops, I'm sorry.
Retroactive to something.
It's retroactive to June of this year. Because it expired.
The expiration of the prior permit.
But then I think we extended it to June or next year.
Next year, right. So this was actually the second extension. It was extended to June of this year. And now it's been extended retroactively to June of next year. 2019.
Okay.
So I'll just... I will send you something in writing.
So this is called old business, Tom. Findings and decisions for site plan review application, Parker River Environmental Studies Building, applicant at Governors Academy. We probably have to do a more thoughtful job timing on this. You know what I mean?
We weren't expecting to do that.
I did not. I thought that was going to be something much quicker. So I have it here. Does everybody have a copy of the decision that Martha mailed out today?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yes, you want to hear the call with this particular decision? Is that correct?
Three, right?
Yeah.
Okay. And George is going to get the call at 2:00 and 17 minutes.
Okay. I hope that's taken. See you, George. Thank you.
Here, Margaret.
Okay.
Do you have an extra copy of the revised... I have the original.
I can certainly make it for you. It's got a few...
I'm trying to think. Does anybody have any comments on this? I know I went through it and got back to Martha and said I was okay.
The only comment I do have is on the test pits.
The test pits.
Test pit plant.
Oh, that's right. No, I do want to... I think that makes sense.
Can you type for a second?
Thank you, Margaret.
Sure.
Just for our own. On item N, and I have it on page seven of nine. It says a confirmatory test pit shall be conducted at proposed on 2P at the time of or prior to construction and based on adjustments made if necessary. Test pit findings and any revisions to the... Says it will come to us for review. And I don't think that's right. I think it should be test pit findings go to Martha. But revisions to the design would come to the planning board. There's no need for us to get... We wouldn't know what to do with the test pit findings. But Martha and Joe can deal with that.
Right.
See what I'm saying?
Joe would. Yeah, Joe would be the one.
So they don't need to come... They don't need to come back to the board for that. And that was my only...
Just to clarify, since the public hearing is closed, we can't take any comment or any information?
Right. But we can make this change if we want to, right?
Yes, and this is the...
So if we want to, otherwise we can let it sit. I mean, isn't it a huge deal? No. But I just think it's... It should be cleaned up.
So that was to say the findings will come to...
You. Bested test pit. Findings come to the town planner and revisions to the base in design shall be submitted to the planning board for review and approval. Okay? So do we need to vote on that change?
So I think the... And you guys reviewed the draft last time. So the vote would be to, if you're ready to do it, approve the decision as amended.
Anybody have any issues to approving the decision as amended?
No issues.
No issues?
No.
And entertain a motion?
To approve the...
The Parker River Environmental Studies Building?
Yes.
Planning Board decision, site plan review.
I move that we approve the planning board decision, site plan review for the Parker River Environmental Studies Building. 203 Newbury Port Turnpike, advocate for Governors Academy, as dated 20th of August 2018.
Any further discussion among us? All those in favor? Good. It's an exciting project.
It really is.
I mean, I have to tell you.
I was very excited.
I drove my daughter-in-law, is an environmental planner in California. And we drove through and I told her about the site and she was very excited.
Yeah, she was. Excited to...
It's too good, basically.
Oh, that.
It's substantial.
That's great.
It is, it is.
So has this been a separate capital campaign?
It's part of the seminar, seminar capital campaign. We're in year four of...
Today's day.
Today's day.
So, yeah. We met with Mike DeRosa today to go over the dock portion of it. Good, interesting. That'll be another path to go.
Everything has processed. So this will get filed with the town tomorrow. There's a 20-day proof period.
Okay.
And then after that, you can pick this up and you'll be ready to go.
Great. And procedurally, anything to do with this finding, do you need to file it?
You know, it's kind of discretionary. It's not a special permit, so it's a little different. It's a little bit discretionary in areas. And it's kind of up to the building inspector, actually. So I'll ask him if he wants to actually file it or not. But I will send you a copy of the signed version, a market copy right now, so that it can't get filed.
Sure.
Not that I think that you would do anything, but... I'll send one to Market Meridian as well. So if you have any questions going forward, let us know.
Yeah, we're set to... I have construction manager and look through the next phase of design. Maybe have to do some time engineering and figure out what the budget is and...
Yeah, go find it, right. Are your two single-family homes occupied?
The two... Yes, they are, yeah.
They're nice looking. I haven't seen them in a couple of months, but...
They're beautiful, but yeah, the grass has filled them in.
Yeah, they're very good. Good. And you're rehabbing another one?
So you want to discuss the...
Yeah, you did send me something.
Yeah, I'm sure you'd know me to respond. If you want to have an open table discussion about the next couple of things we'll bring forward here.
Yeah, I don't know if this is the time to do it.
No. Okay, get it tomorrow, then we'll talk about it.
I can forward your email to them. And then if you want to get on the agenda and talk about those, do that. Yeah. So we could... I mean, what do you want for the September 19 meeting if you want to?
Sure, we can consider that.
Okay. Just get back to me.
Okay, yeah.
So just one thing on this. If, as you go through design development and construction documents, if there are any significant changes to the approved site plan, then that'll need to come back to us as a modification.
Sure, sure.
So we do have, you know, a form to fill out and all that kind of stuff, so...
I would be surprised if we didn't have. To be honest.
There's always a form.
Yes, yeah. Great.
Excellent.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Good luck.
So, thank you.
Thanks for your suggestions.
No, my pleasure.
Is there any new business you want to think about?
I don't...
Oh, wait, I'll go away. We have to sign that.
Yeah, we have to sign that. So that doesn't need to be discussed, as you voted on it last time.
Sorry.
So I think you two, you know, preparing shorts to the various meetings instead of president. Did you see? Never mind.
Well, this is good. At least we're getting two of these off our plate.
It's very good to get them done. I mean, they weren't difficult then.
We'll get others.
Yeah. So aside from that, do you want to talk about anything?
The only... I had just a couple of things that might be of interest. I haven't looked at this on pictometry yet, but the board to get a notice of a site plan application for an OSRD in Georgetown, 66 Parish Road, consisting of 40.24 acres. And that's essentially the extension of Larkin Road. So I don't know whether the site has any frontage on Larkin or not. But that's... I will forward that to you. It's on September 12th at 7:00 PM.
By the way, my only observation about what's been going on around us is that every town except for Newbury has got a recreational or medical marijuana facility going in. Merrimack, Newbury Port.
Right, Georgetown.
Georgetown. Rowley's running away with it.
Rowley's got a couple.
A couple.
Yeah.
It's all about water, folks.
Yeah, the irrigation requirements are huge.
The irrigation requirements are enormous. And so if you cut a well, you can't rely on that. So that's the issue. And we were more assertive about putting a policy together before anyone else.
Right. Newbury Port's just going through their second thing, their second...
They're just doing it.
And we got a notice from Newbury Port Planning Board. They're proposing a prohibition of use variances, which I thought was kind of interesting. And looking at Colby Farm Lane Residential.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So that was really all I had. I have something for you to sign the Horizon invoice.
Okay. That's it? And in terms of the sub... Well, Concom and nobody's here, so...
Right. Yeah, ZDA, I can report on the selectman's meeting last night, which was quite late, of course. But there was a lot of discussion about the building project. The architect came. He had been directed by JR to look at the combined building, lease and fire, uh, place in Town Hall. So they did propose that. And the selectman directed the building committee to refine that concept. So...
What does that mean exactly?
So that means...
How did they refine it?
Yeah, so the proposal is to... They prepared some plans, which need to be tweaked. But the proposal would be to take down the existing Town Hall and put a combined place, which would schematically be similar to what we had before. Police on one level, on the lower level, and Town Hall functions on the upper level. Some shared spaces potentially, like the big meeting, the big rooms for training. So I guess that will be going before...
Town meeting?
Town meeting. I don't know whether it will be kind of a parallel scheme for Stendal and Forest Station.
MPPC wants to do a thing on Newbury on the 20th of September.
September.
I told Karen it'll be okay.
Yeah, I know they've been doing each other.
So, okay. Anything else? Did you hear anything back from Roberta?
No. Hope to follow up with her as well.
See if you can. The two things that are hanging out there are Roberta and Colby Farm.
Right.
If we can do something. May I have a motion to adjourn?
I think that would be a judgment.
All those in favor? Thank you all.